Good morning. This is a city council work session for Monday, August the 2nd. And we'll start off this morning with the discussions on MIRA Phase Two. Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, now my computer just took a while to log in. Hold on. Pull up the... Apologize for that there. Better life through technology. No, it's just a full website. No, I'm in the packet. Okay. Ann's gonna be my screen share here today, because her computer came up a little faster. So I'll start talking through it and...
This may be the quietest you've ever been.
Yeah, blabbing to fill time is kind of my specialty. Okay. So this is a change order consideration. This, we'll be talking about it today, and then if you guys wanted to go ahead, we would vote on it at the, not tomorrow's council meeting, but the first one or the second one in August. Back in, let's see, March, let's see, when was it? Yeah, if you don't mind. So show a screen, share the maps here. I guess I'll talk about the basis for the change and then some of the history on the project. So within the Montrose Urban Renewal Authority is the Rice Ditch. Scroll down. In the packet is a picture showing where that diverts from and where it goes to. So it starts in Colorado Outdoors at the southern end, so to orient you on that drawing there. That kind of road going diagonally across the screen is Grand Avenue, and then obviously the Uncompagri River running left of that. The blue line there is the Rice Ditch itself. When the Urban Renewal Authority was put together, the long-term vision was always that that ditch would be piped for a couple reasons. One for safety, another for maintenance, and then also in support of the development, so you don't have saturated soils and saturated foundations. This ditch was decreed in eighteen, in the 1880s. The city is a water user on this ditch, so it's the, the right is for direct diversion off of the Uncompagri River, but the, the city is a shareholder in the Rice Ditch company, so we do have some stake in this ditch. So we do have some interest in its operation and maintenance. We use it to irrigate at the north end near Tava Watch. And then the ditch ultimately runs all the way up to La Salle Road before dumping back into the Uncompagri River. So that's some of the history on the ditch and where it sits within the Urban Renewal Authority project. So, you know, fast forward to, I don't have the exact date, but when we recently awarded the MIRA Phase Two Public Infrastructure Project, with that project, we were scoping out to do all the public improvements associated with this area in support of the Urban Renewal Authority and in support of the Base Camp Apartments Project. That included utility extensions for water, sewer, communications, power, things of that sort. What was not, what was envisioned in that but not included was piping of the Rice Ditch. So when working through the design on that project, we assumed the ditch would need to be piped. At that point, the developer of the Base Camp project was really trying to keep it an open ditch feature to kind of make it, he called it a bubbling brook, for anybody who's seen the Rice Ditch. I don't know if you'd ever get to a bubbling brook, but that was their vision. So we didn't include that in our scope when we bid that project. As they got, you know, those, both of those products were kind of running parallel, as they got deeper into the apartments designs, they realized that, yeah, we really should have piped this ditch, which I didn't say I told you so, but I wanted to. And so at that point, it's something that was, would have been included in our project, but we had already bid our project and were under contract to start on the rest of the work. And so that's why this is coming to you as a change order, because it would be in addition to the original contract, but not outside of what was originally scoped or envisioned for the project. Kind of worked out pretty well, too, that when we were bidding this, originally the HDPE prices, which is the type of pipe we're using, was a lot higher. So sometimes you ignore your problems and they get better. In this case, it did. So the pricing on this is actually probably more favorable than we would have gotten at the time. So the change order is in the amount of ninety-four thousand six hundred and sixty-eight. If you remember, you know, when we talked about this product a long time ago, we had the original budget excess was... over a million dollars, let's see. Yeah, it was just over a million dollars under budget originally, because a lot of these, when we did the original cost estimates for this, a lot of this type of work was included, among other things, that just got kind of simpler over time. So we still have that million-dollar budget surplus. With this change, the product would still remain nine-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars under budget, so plenty of remaining budget there for these types of items. Sorry, I kind of dove into that haphazard. My brain's just getting wrapped around the day. And happy to answer any questions on that.
Actually, it made a lot of sense, and the written materials in the packet were really clear, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
Makes up for my slowness this morning.
Scott, the question I have, are we able to alter the location of that ditch once we pipe it? I mean, in case we have any difficulties in developments of other pieces of the site, can we structure that such a way that it's not going to be in interference with property?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's why the original, originally it was envisioned that it would all be piped, because we figured we would have to relocate it. Because just by nature of anything, you know, it's always, it's gonna be in the way of something, you know, so we just, that's for planning purposes, we assumed it would have to be relocated. So it is relocatable at any point through here, so long as the functionality and capacity are fully maintained. Something unique about, you know, this is because they were planning to keep it a bubbling brook through the site, they kept it in that original alignment, because when you pipe it, you could get a little more flexibility, because you can toy with the grades a little bit, but when it has to stay and follow existing topography as an open ditch, you're pretty limited on what you can do. So when they originally designed their layout for the Base Camp site, it, they kept it in approximately its existing location. And so in this case, just through this reach, we are piping it in its existing location, but going into future reaches, my guess is, you know, both north and south of here, it would get altered into a different alignment.
Are we gonna have cleanouts along the way? So if we have a plug-up in this thing, we have a way to free it up?
So this reach is short enough that we can get to it from both sides. We, we designed it to be, have enough slope that it's self-cleaning, so we shouldn't have to get into it, but it's always good to leave you the option if you need to. So this reach will be accessible from both ends and have a trash rack on the front end for debris loading, but also for safety, so that, you know, you know, kids or anything, knowing that we'll see a lot more increased pedestrian activity in this area, want to make sure we keep kids out of the pipe.
Scott, you have a, you show on here, we have approximately six-hundred-and-fifty linear feet. Where is the start point? Where's the termination of that? We have, that's the one thing that wasn't really in the packet, was where are we piping?
Yeah, so it's essentially immediately adjacent to the Base Camp site. So the endpoint would be right here at the north end. It flows towards the north, and the starting point would be down here by Sixth Street, kind of straight off from that pin. Yes, the remainers will remain open, because we didn't want to pipe it now and then have it be in the way and have to move it again later. So as development goes both north and south, on a case-by-case basis, we will continue those reaches with those adjacent projects.
And it'll be safer. I mean, I think that's a huge concern I have, because we talk a lot about families that live in the neighborhood. A pipe seems like it could be more dangerous, but we have the opportunity to make it actually safer?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. So the, because the inlet is fully protected, so there's, it's at a point where nobody could get sucked into it, and then the rest is completely closed. And so the way it would have been is you have, would have had houses right next, you know, maybe twenty feet away from an open ditch, which is pretty enticing to kids, and then ditches by, you know, irrigation ditches by their nature usually have steep sides and are harder to get out of and swift. And so good, you know, good example is what we did on River Bottom Drive, where you had a wreck trail right alongside the irrigation ditch. Now that's fully piped and you don't even know it's there. So that's kind of the intent here is, is to maintain, don't even, don't even, if kids don't know it's there and they aren't enticed to go playing it, all the better is kind of the idea, so.
Anthony, anything?
You know, we talked, or you mentioned that you, there may be need in the future for expansion of the reach?
Yep, so eventually, the, the long-term master plan for Colorado Outdoors has this being piped all the way from its diversion, which is down by the wreck trail down here. Thanks, Ann. Up to, right now, it goes underneath the roundabout at North Ninth Street. So, you know, we'd fill in those other gaps later. Right now, those are just going to be kind of open fields that are undeveloped and don't have any pedestrian facilities alongside them, so, you know, those are, those are safe for now, but as development and houses or whatever ends up going down and there goes into that area, we would look at piping it at the same time.
Is there any cost savings to just expanding it now and covering it all, or not really?
Not really, no. So the economy of scale are here, we, we've already kind of taken advantage of that. You'd maybe see a five percent chance if you're doing the whole thing at once, but what I've learned in these types of projects and planning is wherever you put it, wherever you guess, even if you have every, all your ducks in a row, something will change inevitably and it'll be in the wrong place. And whatever savings we gained, we would lose by having to move it out of the way again later, so.
And that's because of the, by not piping it now, it gives us the flexibility to relocate and move that ditch to comply with what the building site plans may be for future development.
Absolutely. Yep, yep, we get it. And a good common area out of the way type thing, yep.
David Reed is with us today online. David, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Mayor. I'm fine right now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Scott? All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Next item is B, Montrose Public Safety Complex Construction Contract Amendment. Bill Bell and a whole group of other folks.
It's almost the whole room of people here today to talk to you. So we need to talk about the police building project. We're far enough along in the project with the bid packages and, and all the different construction estimates, that we think that we have some good final rough draft numbers. I always, I don't want to say they're final-final numbers, but they're, they're pretty close. And so with all of the impacts from COVID and supply chain management and unforeseen soil conditions, things like that, we needed to update city council and let you know where we're at on construction costs and what we're seeing and plan for the rest of the project. So we have quite a few people here with us today. We have representatives from Shaw Construction. Ty is going to talk to you a little bit about the project from the construction management side. We have Peter from Blythe, the Architect Group, talk to you a little bit about design options and what we're looking at, and, and throw out some choices for you to make or give some advice on today. And we'll have Riley from Dynamic, our owner's rep, talking to you today, and then Jim Shide and, and then Blaine and I will be here to answer any questions after the presentation. But we think after today, we'll have the guidance we need to move this to a formal consideration at a future council meeting. And we're trying to expedite that as much as possible, and you'll hear the reasons for that. And I think a lot of you know already the supply chain issues that everyone in the country is facing, and so time is of the essence on a lot of our ordering and, and some of those things. So let's jump right into it. I don't know how long the conversation's gonna be. That'll be driven by all of you probably after the presentation, but we want to make sure we allow time for that. Lot of questions and answers from the city council, so I'll turn it over to Ty.
Thanks. Ty with Representative Shaw. And basically, like Bill said, you know, right now, you probably heard, it's kind of an unprecedented time in the market with supply chain costs. We're seeing a lot of price increases since the first, you know, first of the year. They've been weekly, daily, monthly. We, we constantly get notices of prices that are being affected and, and shooting up within the market. And it creates a huge challenge on, you know, on the entire team to just try to maintain a budget, but if you, you know, if we're seeing prices that are coming in higher, or we know that they're going to increase, is at least identifying and letting people know that, hey, these are, these are some challenges that are coming up, and, and we want to try to mitigate as much as possible going forward, whether that's material, whether that's labor. A couple things, you know, examples on, on this project in particular is, you've heard about price increases, but there's also, you know, things that we run into where a bunch of people, labor shortages, people are really busy. You know, example is, we sent this out to competitive bid, and for the subcontractors, you know, we had nine different roofers that we specifically sent it to, and we got, you know, one or two prices. And it's just because everybody's so busy, or they don't have the labor, or the time that it's, we need them to do the work is just not, you know, aligning with the manpower they have, and, and, or they have material issues. We had roofing insulation, for example, not necessarily a price increase, but the time that it takes to get, went from getting in in four weeks to six months. It's the lead time on roofing insulation. And so we're having to work with the design team and the whole team to say, hey, this, this material just went from, you know, something that's readily available to something that's not. What can we do and how can we manage that and mitigate the costs on that? So it's been very challenging. You know, we've had subs that, you know, we were carrying their costs, they, they were interested in the, in the project and say the DD level when we originally presented this, but since then, they've picked up so much work that they just dropped out and wouldn't price the project. So it, you know, we end up going with maybe a higher number than what we had anticipated because they dropped out of the, the running. So a lot of different challenges, especially with material and labor, but other things that we've experienced on the site is just unforeseen conditions with the soils. Not sure if everybody is aware of it, but there's just, you know, once you uncover the soils, you, you never know. When you're doing a geotech, you never quite know exactly what you're gonna run into. We ended up uncovering some unsuitable soils on a majority of the site, quite a bit of area. So it, it ended up eating into the owner's, you know, contingency to cover those costs. And so is one of the reasons I think they're trying to recoup some of those costs in this, in this new estimate, to try to protect for future things that might come up as well. So some of those are just examples. You know, Shaw has offices in Denver, Grand Junction, Salt Lake City. And just to give you an idea, we're seeing on projects that we priced back in fall, late of last year to now, we're seeing anywhere from, on the very low end, you might see eight percent increase, but on the high end, you might see a fourteen percent increase of what we're seeing across, across all three offices in the market. And we just want to, you know, make note that because of the councils, thanking the council on the early authorizations that you gave this team to release some steel, release some screw piles, which are made out of metal and steel, this project is trending on below that lower end. It's about seven to seven point eight percent. And so I think that's a good thing for this project, because I think we could definitely have seen this a lot higher if those decisions hadn't have been made and released earlier in the process. So I think that's a testament to you guys' decision to release some of those things early and seeing what the market was doing. One of the other things challenging moving forward is we're, us as a team, we work really well with Blythe, we work with them a lot, on trying to come up with, I know there's a term that ever, all you are probably familiar with is value engineering. You know, that term sometimes is a little deceiving, because, you know, everyone thinks they're getting less value for what, you know, some things that are being chosen. And it's one of the things, or less quality, I guess I should say. One of the things we like to talk about at Shaw is just that value engineering is, it can be a value add, it can be a value savings. It's what can we get a similar product that gives you the same quality, the same life of the product, but maybe be able to do it at a little lesser cost? And so, and, and we track that on what we call Budget Status Log, or BSL Log, which you might hear some more in this, in this presentation. And so we, we've gone through that at every stage of this project with, at the DD, at the, at the schematic level, at the design development level, and at the, this level now. And, you know, overall, I think we've identified close to a million and a half dollars that we had kind of, you know, taken out, and it's not in here, and we've been able to adjust things to make, to have those savings on this project. So I think that's a testament to the team and Blythe for being, you know, finding alternate solutions to maybe some designs, and, and also working with our subs. Our, some of our subs have been great in working as a partner with us to, to help identify and find some other ways to, to help this project, because they're all eager to, to get this project going and, and, and continue going and moving forward. The one, the one issue you run into with VE is it's a time. It takes time. You got to identify an item, you got to go out to the subs, you got to price it, see what your, what your savings might be, and then you've got to make a decision on if that savings is worth, you know, moving forward with. And with the pricing increases that we've been seeing on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, we're almost seeing a diminishing of returns, where we're going through that process to save money, but then all of, all of a sudden, you know, we get three weeks down the road and we've had a price increase. So now you just got what you didn't want for the same price as what you could have had if you would have just moved forward, if, if we could have moved forward right away. So it's one of those things that, you know, that's what we're kind of challenged with right now, is we, we, we still need to go through a little bit on the finishes, on a BSL, a value engineering process, but we're trying to identify each of those items individually and dealing with them on a case-by-case basis, and talking to the subs and saying, reaching out to the tile guy and saying, you know, are you gonna have, do you foresee any price increase over the next three to four weeks? And if they say no, we have an opportunity to go through that process and, and see if we can find some savings. If they, you know, if they don't, if they think there's going to be a price increase, we're trying to make a decision as a team, is do we just move forward with what, what we have currently in there? So it's, it's a challenging, it's definitely a challenging time. We're, we're trying to do whatever we can to help mitigate, and as a team, I think this team's done a great job of, you know, Chief and his group has kind of looked at all the things and said, what do they need to make an efficient operating police department? I think Blythe has done a fantastic job of saying, hey, on the design, we can make a few little adjustments here and there, and our subs, of course, have, you know, have pitched in on that as well. But it's, it's just one of those things that we wanted to kind of let you know, everyone hears about the market, but to really understand what's happening in the market is, is kind of challenging. We're seeing material shortages, you know, paint shortage, insulation shortage, that our Denver office is having to drive to Texas to go pick up paint, because there's just not paint available to do some projects over there. So just an example of kind of what we're challenged with and what we're trying to work through and mitigate. But I'll, I'll take this time and turn it over to Peter, so he can talk about some of the design side of it.
One of the things I'd like to point out is when Chief Hall presented his budget to us originally, that one of the things that he used as an example of materials increases and prices, and the reason we expedited that entire process, was a sheet of seven-sixteenths OSB oriented strand board. At that time, it had gone up from nine dollars and fifty cents to seventeen dollars. The current price of OSB seven-sixteenths board is thirty-three dollars. And that has just come down from forty-six dollars. So the volatility in this market of materials is really hard to judge. And I wanted to thank you guys all for really kind of keeping your finger on the pulse of that for us and trying to get, make the best deals for us.
Yep, absolutely.
I have a question, though, for you. So I understand the volatility in the materials pricing, and I understand what you're saying about the VE process. My question is, how much money we're paying Shaw? So my understanding is usually that's based on a percentage of the total cost. So are we paying Shaw more because materials have gone up? Are you, are you literally making more money on the project because materials have gone up?
We get, we get paid off a percentage of the total project costs. And so in essence, yes, our, we get three point two percent or something like that per our, per our contract. And so if the material price go up, then yes, essentially the overall cost of our, to manage those costs goes up as well.
Sure. Okay, so it isn't just the materials cost, it's also the percentage going to Shaw that's, goes up as a result?
Well, the percentage stays the same.
Well, the percentage is the same, the amount.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
David, did you have any questions? David Reed?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Well, I do have one question. I know that we, we did soil samples early on, and I think everybody was well aware of some of the soil conditions of other buildings in the area. How did we miss some of the soil condition situations that we've run into on this that has also increased the cost?
Well, I can respond to some of that. I'm Peter Eisner with the Blythe Group. My, my former boss was fond of saying, you can dig a thousand holes, and you'll, you still only know what's at the bottom of a thousand holes. So some of it, so it's multiple factors, but some of it is, is caused by, you just, you, you, you're doing specific borings in certain areas, and so you don't get a, you don't get an entire picture when you do a geotechnical report, because you're not uncovering the entire site. So there's, it's, it's very rare to not find something that's, that's unexpected somewhere on the site. I think also the conditions can change over time, and so what, I, I think what we ended up with here is that the, the geotechnical report thought, well, we could use this, we can reuse this soil on site. And I think we could have. The problem that we ran into was it just ended up being too wet. And so if a soil, if the soil comes out and it's too sloppy and you, and you can't even compact it, because it's just mud, then it, if you, if you can reuse it, that's fine, but you have to dry it out somewhere first, and timing-wise and, and space-wise, that, that wasn't really feasible. And so we, we have had to import soil to, to put underground. Did, did that, is that about it, Ty? Did that answer your question, or? Okay. Oh, yeah, and we, we, as part of this BSL or Budget Status Log process, one, one of the things we did with the soil was we, we even said, well, can we get a mix? Can we, can we import some and mix it with what's come out to, to help reduce the costs? And the, and the mix, it, it didn't end up being feasible, but that's, that's one of the, you know, one of the many things we've been evaluating as we've moved through, trying to mitigate some of those, some of those items. I, I just will add a few things to what Ty said. You know, this BSL process, the Budget Status Log, is, is not an unusual process for a public project. It's something we go through on almost every public project we do. I think the unusual part about this one is maybe the number of items that we've tried to evaluate. It's, you know, that, that log that, that Ty was talking about has nearly a hundred different line items on it that we've, that we've tried to say, hey, let's, let's look at this, let's look at this, what, what is the cost that we, that we might save for these, and, and, and all of that. And, and some are accepted, some are rejected as, as costs. You know, for, for example, one of the early ones we did was some square footage reduction. And we, we as, as we were designing the building, worked pretty hard to try and make it as efficient as we could and get, get the building smaller, because one of the biggest reductions you can make is, is reducing the size of what you're building. And so we did that early on and got quite a bit of square footage out without, we had to be careful with that, because we, we wanted to make sure we weren't compromising the, the use of the building for the PD, obviously. You know, some other items that have been on that list, for example, you know, that there's, there's an option for a sound masking system that we have in the building, and one of the subcontractors came to us and said, well, you know, we, we probably could, if we did it in this way, we could do it quite a bit less. And so that was an item that was accepted. You know, removing tile from toilet room floors and going in, in favor of some, some concrete floors, it'll be just as durable, but we don't have to have the, the tile floor in there. So that's, that's some examples of, of the effort that we've gone through. And like I said, you know, nearly a hundred items on these lists throughout the different phases of the project. We're, we've done it enough that, that we're, we feel like, as a team, we feel like we're at the point where there's not much else that we can do to, to cut it. We're, we're doing, you know, really small stuff, you know, material changes, and there's only so much money that you can get out of those things. For example, you know, taking the tile out of, of some of the, the bathroom floors. So it's really just small changes that are left. You know, what, what also plays into, into the cost, the overall cost of the project early on, we, we do, a lot of times, we'll do what we call alternates in a project. And so we, we did several alternates on this. A couple of these are, are items that, that I'd like to review specifically today. One, one is, you know, the, the design of the building has a new parking lot, secure parking lot to the south for, for police cars, police vehicles. And we have some, some visual aids here. Thanks, Shannon. And so the, this image here at the bottom is, is indicating some, some coverings, canopies for that, that parking area. That, that's something that's not currently in the project, but it's something that we all, as a team, all agree and think, this, this would make a lot of sense. You know, you as a city have, have a lot of money invested in those police vehicles and have a lot of sensitive equipment in them. And the, the, the general consensus is, if you can park those in shade, you know, the, the equipment lasts longer over the long, the long-term use of the equipment and causes fewer issues over the, over the lifetime of that equipment. And so that's really something that we all want to do, and the, the thought is we would put solar photovoltaic panels on top of those canopies, and that, that's something that's not currently in, in the, the amendment we're, we're talking about today, but the building is set up to be able to add that in the future. And so we, you know, we, it's something we all want, but we thought, eh, that's, maybe, maybe we should push that one down the road a little bit, because it, it doesn't really, it, it wouldn't be more difficult to add later after the project's done. It's all outside. The, the connections, the conduit will be there to tie back into the building if, if you put a solar electric system there. So that, that one doesn't really add difficulty. The other alternate I'd like to talk, to talk about is what we're calling seat walls or planter walls around certain areas of the building, the, mostly the west and the north sides of the building. And that's these... The connections, the conduit will be there to tie back into the building if you put a solar electric system there. So that one doesn't really add difficulty. The other alternate I'd like to talk about is what we're calling seat walls or planter walls around certain areas of the building, mostly the west and the north sides of the building. And that's these two images here. So we designed these as an alternate because it was something that could be installed or not installed. The advantages of having them are that it does improve the security of the building. It helps to keep vehicles from being able to approach the building, you know, if they jump the curve or something on purpose or not on purpose. But it also, we feel improves the civic look of the building and the usability. I mean, it's nice, you know, you have that out in front of City Hall. And so as far as the civic aspect of this whole area, we feel like that would make a big difference on how the building fits into downtown. And so here's the image without them. You know, it would still look nice, but not, maybe not quite as, to the same civic facility level that it would with them. But I think the big thing there is the security. As far as adding those, those would be very, very difficult to add in the future. And so that's why we're hoping to get those included now because of the benefits that they can provide to the project long-term. And that, this is something that's included in that, in the amendment that we're talking about today. I think that was about all I had to cover. If there are any questions, I can address those. Otherwise, I'll introduce Riley with Dynamic Program Management.
David? In this amendment, what is the proposed total amount for those seating planters?
Ooh, I'm going to have to defer to Ty or James on that.
Sixty-eight, nine seventy-five, is that correct number?
Yeah. Okay.
One of the things in our discussions and prior conversations is to make this building not only very utilitarian, but also aesthetically pleasing and also make sure that it fits with our vision of the civic plaza. So personally, I like the planters. I think it adds a lot of depth and dimension as well as the security to the building.
And that was our feeling as well, so.
And I can appreciate that when you go through the list of add alternates, that you want to consider which ones are easier to add in the future. Thank you.
Well, having a little background in the security of buildings, I absolutely believe that we need those planters out front. I think that's a must.
I would echo those same thoughts.
Anthony?
Yeah. Is that, so are we seeing that in like when that alternate pricing in here? I just want to confirm that's worked in here, correct?
For the seat walls?
Yes.
Yeah, that one is included.
That is included, okay.
That's what we're talking about.
And so when we see the concrete increase, that's part of that concrete increase?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually included on the GMP combined sheet that's in your packet. Near the bottom, there's a line item for seat wall at planters for sixty-eight thousand nine seventy-five. That's this item.
My background in construction, I can tell you a number of horror stories about trying to come in and retroactively add something that should have been added to the very beginning.
Sure.
And a number of homeowners that spent a hundred dollars trying to save five. So I think that it really behooves us to look at these things in a really pragmatic viewpoint. We can install them now for sixty-nine, or sixty-eight, nine seventy-five, or later for five hundred thousand, you know. I really want to avoid that type of, you know, penny pinching.
Peter, can you tell me, do those, do those seat walls extend? I can see the picture, it looks really nice. Are they along the front and the side? Are they along, can you just show us where they?
So yeah, it would come here along the west side of the building as well as across the north, the front. And then there, it's harder to see in this image because of the location, but there are some down at the east.
Okay, they continue, so once you go past the glass area, they continue on the other side?
They do. And the focus really was, so you know, this facility has a secure fenced area around certain sides of it. And so the focus on these seat walls really was outside, you know, the public.
The public facing part of the building and mirroring what we have at City Hall. I think that is really a nice aesthetic. And security aesthetics at all.
It's a good combination, right?
It's a good combination.
The one thing I might add on the canopies, you know, with this ask, I mentioned, you know, that is not currently included, but I think our hope is that the contingency would be at a point later in the project that we could add those through that contingency. But again, that's why we do alternates because it, you know, things happen and we need to have options.
Would you say that canopies on the parking is the top of the list of add alternates at this point?
I would say yes, to my knowledge, yeah. And like I said, that one is easy to add later. It's not, it does not have the same kind of impact as some of the others.
Easy from a construction standpoint?
Right.
I think it's harder from a, you know, the building's done, you celebrate it being open and then to spend more money. I just, I know the list of add alternates at the rec center that were always considered for the future, none of them have gotten done.
Sure, sure.
Sometimes the moment is the best time to do them.
I would never disagree with that.
Peter, another question. Do you have a cost estimate of what the solar panels are?
I think we do. I don't have the numbers off.
I don't remember seeing that in the packet.
We had like three or four different prices. They ranged anywhere from two hundred to four hundred dollars a hour. And so it's really, it can range.
Let's hold off. My recommendation would be to hold off for now and keep that list on, and keep those panels in the, on the list of add alternates and see how cost pricing shakes out and see how our revenues shakes out and.
And that was our thought.
If we manage to compile some saving, and because of the fluctuations in materials cost can, maybe we'll luck out and it'll fluctuate down for us and we can incorporate that savings in a later project.
Give you an example, one of our other projects has a large number of covered parking and solar. And what they've done is they've elected, because the price of steel right now, the futures, they're hoping that they're going to come down. And so they've elected to hold off and in the spring reevaluate it before the project is done and say, has those numbers come down? Do we have enough contingency to pay for it? Or is there a little bit of offset that has to be done to cover the cost?
That sounds like what we should be doing.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Well, with that, I'll hand it over to Riley O'Brien, your owner's rep with Dynamic Program Management.
All right.
Hello, Riley O'Brien, Dynamic Program Management. Some of the items I was going to cover, my colleagues have already covered, so I think I'll be relatively brief. Continuing on Ty's comment about releasing the steel package early, there was the cost benefits to that. There was also a big schedule benefit. If we had waited longer to procure the steel, we could have been in a situation where we couldn't get the steel in time to maintain our project schedule. So that was another big benefit of being proactive with that decision to release that package back in January. Very much appreciate that. And then continuing on Peter's point about using contingency to purchase those add alternates, the way that process works is as the project goes along and project risks go down that we are facing, we're able to use that contingency to purchase those add alternates. So one example is coming out of the ground now, at least for the building and foundations. Granted, we hit, had about a two hundred thousand dollar hit for unsuitable soils there, but now that risk is behind us, at least for the building footprint. There's still the parking lot behind the building that has some soil risk associated with it. But as the project goes along and project risks go down, that's where that opportunity to spend that contingency, if it's still available on add alternates, comes up. I think of all the items that we were going to hit, I think that's, I think that's everything. So do you have any questions?
David, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
And then so that brings us to Jim. I think you're, are you presenting the numbers?
I just have one last item to add, kind of build on what everybody else has already said. And that's the request to bring this item to council tomorrow night and with your approval, of course. But the reason is we're seeing price escalation on a daily basis in some cases, especially as we start into the smaller and the finishes side of the project, which is a lot of what Shaw is buying out now. Price escalation definitely is one concern in that we are actually seeing on a daily or weekly basis, but also the availability. I think that's a major concern of mine in addition to the cost, but we're seeing some materials that are all of a sudden no longer available or that the lead time is unknown. And so expediting that process for we can award and kind of buy out this last part of the project sooner will help that. And so this, we are through bid pack three now, which was the last one. So we're at the point now where we establish a GMP with Shaw. And that's what this request was for, to establish the total GMP with Shaw and release them to buy out their subcontracts in the full amount without having to wait two more weeks and likely there would be some changes in these last couple of weeks. So that's the request to bring it to you as early as our council meeting tomorrow evening. But with that, I'd be happy to go into any details and explain any of the packet or answer any questions.
Can you address my concern that we're paying, that we're paying more to Shaw just because the price of a window or a screw or a piece of plywood has gone up? And I would guess that that is the written contract we signed and it doesn't really matter if it's frustrating or not?
It is, it is part of the contract. So it is a, an agreement based on percentage of the cost of the work. And there is more work involved with it. So even though one item may cost more, there is quite a bit of buyout even in what they're working on now and in comparing scopes of work and price escalation, for example, when one subcontract has a certain price for an item and it's escalated compared to a different sub that's escalated to a different amount. They have just, they have more time, I would say, percentage wise, even though prices have increased, their amount of work they have in comparing those prices has increased as well.
Thank you, that helps me.
May I follow up on that, Mayor?
David, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. To follow up on Barbara's comment, that was an issue that struck me also. I guess I'd like to know, just taking it one step further, does staff feel that the increase in the contractor fee due to increased cost of materials is proportionate to the extra work involved or notwithstanding the fact that it is a contract and I know we're obligated, but I would like to have some comfort level that the increase fee, quite frankly, is not a windfall to the contractor, that it is justified with the additional amount of work. And so if staff could expand on that just a bit, that would be helpful to me.
Yeah, and there's kind of two parts to the amount that goes to Shaw. There's their fee and then there's their general conditions. And the general conditions are for their job trailer and their time and the management of the project. And that part is fixed, that part stays the same throughout the course of the project. The fee is the only part that's fixed, that is attached to the value of the project.
One thing I have a question about, and actually this is more aimed at Shaney Wittenberg, our finance director. We've seen an increase in our, because of our increase in our taxes and sales tax. I would be interested in knowing what kind of headroom that has given us in our public safety sales tax fund to, in order to fund this increase.
Let's let Jim finish what he was about to say on the.
Yeah, and actually I got something to add to that, which, based on my math, my math can sometimes be bad. It looks like that increase, we're looking at about a $2 million rough increase in budget. And at 3%, that's about $64,000, is that correct? That we're seeing in a contractor fee increase? About 40,000.
About 40,000. There, the additional amount to the contract, the Shaw contract and the owner's contingency was 1.8. So the owner's contingency is not within the Shaw contract and would not be marked up. So the overall ask is 1.8. The Shaw contract increase, I'm going to have to do some quick math, but it goes from 1.2.
So that's about $40,000 in increase to the contract fee.
And what I heard you say a minute ago was they are working harder and you feel like that is, it isn't just a simply a matter of they're, they're just, it's a $40,000 windfall because the price of lumber went up. They're working harder because the prices are gone up, it's taking more work for them to work on the sourcing those materials.
Definitely, yeah. I would say that Shaw has stepped up to this challenge. I mean, it's a, I think every project is a challenge, but in these times of price escalation and material challenges we're having, they've, they're definitely part of our team and have stepped up to that to, to help deliver this project anyway, even though, I mean, the list of challenges can, could be talked about for days.
Sure.
So yes, I do think that they've increased the, their work associated with the project in comparison to the escalation we've seen in price.
That really helps me out and I really appreciate that. Jay, David, did that help? Was that the answer to your question too? Did that help?
Absolutely. I appreciate the explanation and that helps me also.
And I know they've been, I know they've been good partners and it just feels like that's the kind of questions we're supposed to ask.
Absolutely.
Shaney, did you have an addition to this?
I'd like to throw out the caveat that we understand that this bump in sales tax is perhaps a one-time thing and it's not a reliable continual source of income, but we have had that increase enough, we have increased that fund somewhat. And I just would like to hear kind of a quick update on whether or not we can incorporate some of this into that fund.
Otherwise known as, can we afford this?
So through May, sales and use tax collections for the Public Safety Fund is up 45% compared to what we budgeted, which is about a $560,000 increase. So like you were talking, this is probably, this might be just a one-time thing, this might be just a recovery year type of sales tax. So I do believe that we could definitely spend that increase on the building.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Shaney.
As an ancillary note to our sales tax, it's interesting to note with I-70 being closed and my understanding is CDOT just halted the construction on 50 in the meantime, maybe we'll see continued increase in sales tax.
Definitely seeing an increase in traffic.
Now we just need them to stop and spend money.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anything else, Jim?
I didn't have anything else unless you have other questions.
No, but I'm good on voting on this tomorrow. I feel like we got enough chance to ask the questions. There's nothing else I would ask you later that I hadn't, that I didn't get a chance to ask you today.
Yeah, I think we saw the benefit of the expedited action on, in January when we kind of got ahead of the steel prices. And I would hate to have us regret this later on by saying, well, let's talk about it more and it cost us more. So I'm pretty comfortable with moving that forward as well.
Anthony? David?
I'm very comfortable moving forward tomorrow night.
All right, I'm comfortable with that too. And I'm assuming this will be a necktie increase?
It will, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Be worth moving it forward just to see you had a necktie again.
Any other questions along that item? Let's go to item C, Rescue Plan. Kendall Kramer?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'll follow up with saying I'm here to give you guys money. I've got the money. So this is the American Rescue Plan Act. The city of Montrose is a recipient of new funds from that. Congress passed another stimulus bill, as you're aware of, earlier this year to provide local communities and governments across the country additional funding. They actually allocated $350 billion to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments to respond to the COVID-19 emergency. The city of Montrose's allocation, which comes directly from the US Treasury, is $4,972,285.85. These funds, we have received half of those funds to date and we will receive the second half of those funds around May or June of next year is when we anticipate to receive those. These funds have a broad, have broad uses. All of them have to be, however, related to COVID-19 and our response. They, this time, the first stimulus bill was all on a reimbursement basis. So we received, I believe, around $1.1 million under the previous stimulus bill. And we had to spend those funds and then request reimbursement. These funds, we receive upfront. So that's a major difference in how these funds have been allocated and distributed. They have to be used in one of the four eligible use categories specified in the American Rescue Plan Act. Number one being responding to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. They can also be used to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-19, the public health emergency, by providing premium pay to eligible workers. That's specific primarily to hospital workers, emergency personnel, and others that are primarily essential workers for the response. And C down here, the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergencies. So it can cover reductions in tax revenue as well. And then a newer one that's been added that was not included in the previous stimulus bill was to make necessary improvements to water, sewer, or br-. was to make necessary improvements to water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. And so that's a really big one and that kind of speaks to the greater latitude that communities across the country have with using these funds. Included with the memo in your packet is just a brief guide from the U.S. Department of the Treasury of the various uses that these funds can be spent on. The staff have internally discussed some ideas of how these funds could be used, but we're really looking to City Council for your for your guidance and input on how to best serve the community. Some of the things that have been discussed are possible using using these funds potentially for water and sewer infrastructure to accommodate new housing developments in the community. Other infrastructure improvements such as to the mobile home parks, which I believe will be on your agenda tomorrow night. So there's a lot of different ways that we can use this. A couple of the other things, just looking through the guidance, you know, permanent supportive housing, mental health services, violence prevention. I watched a webinar last week. These funds can also be used for the police department for purchasing equipment or programming or services to respond to any increased crime during COVID-19. They can be provided for small business assistance grants or loans. Direct cash, in fact, can they can be used for as well as parks and recreation facilities as trails. As COVID-19 happened, more people were stuck at home, but they also wanted to get out more, so they went out and recreated. And so these they can be used potentially for that as well, as well as childcare services, the development of those services and potentially the construction of a childcare facility. So there's a lot of different ways these funds can be used. And so we just wanted to bring it to council to get your input. And I'll let Bill speak as well if he has any input that I've missed on this.
You actually did a really good job and covered everything on my list. I would just add some detail on the one option for the mobile home park cleanup project. If we remember the recent meeting, we we talked about private entity purchasing three mobile home parks and cleaning those up for our community and council's desire at the time was to beef up the city's contribution a little bit. And so one thing we were thinking is we could add another 200 or 250,000 to the city's contribution, which would double what we were talking about at the last meeting, using some of these funds in conjunction with general fund dollars. So we could, you know, there's a variety of options available. That was just one thing we were talking about. And then for the water and sewer infrastructure, we had already budgeted this year to support some of the multifamily apartment complex projects. And then after our budget was completed, Project Seven came to the city and said, we want to start charging the city of Montrose an increased rate to plan for facility expansion near the Ridgeway Reservoir in the next 10 years. They're going to be building another treatment plant for redundancy and to serve capacity in the future. And that wasn't planned for the city. And so by backfilling money into the water and sewer funds, we can help in absorb that increased cost of Project Seven. And so it's a win-win for both projects. So those are kinds of the details we were talking about. And then details related to the daycare project. We have some projects that have had many partners working on brainstorming the daycare issue to try to to fit it into the overall picture. We know we have lots of people moving to the community, a lot of new businesses starting, but without housing to put the workers, without daycare, so people don't have to stay at home. They can actually go to work, especially young mothers who are just entering the workforce. And then they have children and have to pull themselves back out of the workforce. We want to resolve that issue so we can have a lot of working moms in our community. But it's a major issue and I and we appreciate the work that's been done with Maslow and some other groups in town to resolve some of the daycare things. So detail on that would would come later if there's general interest. But today we just wanted to throw out some of these ideas. We're starting to get questions from our partners around the community, nonprofit organizations. The county citizens have approached us almost weekly and asked, hey, how are you going to use those rescue plan dollars? And so far, we haven't really had any answer. We've just said, well, we brainstormed some things, but we actually haven't talked to City Council about it. So today is just to have you discuss it as a group and give us some head nods and kind of general direction on where to go and then we can move forward on projects.
So a couple of things. One, for clarity for the public, that when we were talking about this trailer park project, we're talking about the city assisting the developer in asbestos mitigation, which is a priority in the city and it is something we have invested in previously. And I like the idea of us being able to allocate a little bit more funds in order to really help offset that because public safety and health is always a big thing for us. The on the water side, the question I have, because that actually you hit that right on the head with what I was wondering, is in previous stimulus, we had to spend that money in a specific amount of time. Can we bank this to help offset those Project Seven increases so that we can stabilize our water rates for our customers?
Yes, so the funds, let me just find this in here. The funds have to be incurred by December 31 of 2024 and they have to be expended by December 31 of 2026.
So if I can add to that, we would basically take the money that we had already put into our budget and we would use that to build up the fund balance in the water and sewer fund by paying for those projects with this funding. And so we're we're doing the same accomplishing the same task, but meeting those guidelines as far as deadlines and those types of things. And one clarification on the mobile home park project. Because there's a couple hundred pages of details with how you can use the rescue plan dollars, it's not quite as confusing as CARES Act, but it's still pretty confusing. And there's conflicting language in there, probably because different entities at the federal level threw in their stuff, but they didn't have enough time to make sure it all matched up. So there's some water and sewer component to the mobile home park cleanup project as well. And so we would make sure that we're using if we had the council said, yes, we want to use some of this money toward the mobile home park project. We would make sure it's used on eligible expenses. So it might not all be asbestos if asbestos isn't listed as a rescue plan thing. But clean water and sanitation is, and so that one's a no-brainer. And so we would definitely detail that out in a spreadsheet for all of you.
So I have a couple of questions and one would be actually a comment of support. I think looking at those water and sewer issues in that mobile home park, I think we've talked about more than one mobile home park having problems. And maybe it does behoove us to look at it as a broader project where we say, hey, we know that these haven't been updated in the last 40 years, 50 years, however long it's been. We need to start looking at that because having sewage come up in the middle of a park is a bad idea. And it is against health and safety. It does cause a health and safety concern. And I think that having that available would make a lot of sense. And I is there accountability on this as far as do we have to report back how we spent it? Is there a possibility that we report back, we spent it this way and they come back and say, oh, you guys weren't supposed to do that?
There is reporting, however, there's not as much reporting as the previous stimulus act. There's a quarterly report that or not a quarterly, excuse me, an annual report. And the webinar that I watched, they said, just to make sure that any decision that you make is supported by data. So we're a growing community, so we can show our population is growing. We can show, you know, if it's for childcare, the number of children that don't have spaces. There's always that potential. There was the potential with the last one and it went through multiple reviews. You know, and then Shaney and I over the last month or two have got to go through the audit process. And they say, well, why did you spend it this way? Well, because that's what we were told we could do. You know, it was approved and that's what we went by. So there is that potential. But I think that I think that, you know, the guidance here, you know, they really, you know, with the different the latitude that you can spend and the fact that they put water and sewer infrastructure and broadband in there, I think kind of speaks to the fact that they they want communities to use it in this way and that they did hear the feedback from the previous one that seemed that the bill was too restrictive on what communities could spend it on. So I think I think there's, you know.
With a population increase due to COVID, I mean, that makes sense. People moved here because they fled the city, so I guess you have some latitude there in how you work it. And I guess with the with the in regards to the childcare portion of that, which I I think is a great idea. Do we have to? Does it allow for the starting of new? Because I think it meant you mentioned new or existing. I just want to clarify. It does allow us to build new programs versus having to just fund existing.
So I'll say the Treasury guidelines are kind of wishy-washy. It says for the development of new childcare facilities. So development, and I don't know if we'll get farther clarification beyond the word development.
No, yeah, we were working within the parameters that we have. And and right now, the daycare projects or early childcare projects that we've heard about are still in the, I'd say, the middle portion of their planning stages, so we don't really have a lot of detail. But if we were to support it, we would make sure that we tailor and document our support went to the development of this many additional childcare slots for our community. Using that recent study and a variety of other data points showing, you know, let's just say we have 300, we have the need for 300 more childcare slots, the city would help get 80 more and then private would do the rest or something like that, partnering with other agencies in town. Because there's a lot of people, including the county, working on that particular piece. And then one thing I did forget to mention is another potential use of the funds. Montrose Recreation District also reached out to us because they had a loss of revenue during COVID because they weren't open and they they still tried to keep staff employed and and repurpose them to help with delivering meals and different things throughout the community. And so there is a request sitting there from MRD to the city and the county to help backfill their lost revenue. And lost revenue is an eligible expense as well. So that's on the list also. And and I'd forgot to mention that before, but we we told them we'd bring that up for consideration as well as we move forward. And I think that was around 1.1 million or something.
Yes, the revenue loss was around 1.1 million. And and I'll add on to that special districts such as the Recreation District. It's my understanding, as well as Mary's at the Rec. District, they do not receive any of these funds. So this is that is one of the reasons for the request is the last bill, special districts, you could. This bill, special districts were left out for funding.
That's interesting because if we if they had been a city parks and rec. department, then it would have been covered. But because they're a special district, they're not. I was going to say, thank you so much for your comments because I think they really reflect what I know you've heard from me about issues that are important to me. And I think at the top of the list are housing and childcare. And I think those issues have been exacerbated by COVID. And so it would be totally appropriate to spend this COVID money on those issues. And so ways that we can provide more childcare, I think, is is really at the top of the list because we're seeing so many young moms particularly who are underemployed because of that issue. And in terms of having a strong productive workforce, I think that is a huge missing piece in our current economy. And then also housing from mobile home parks through multifamily housing, that anything the city can do to help, that's already something we're working on. I think it's an appropriate use of of COVID money as well. And then I do like the idea of creating a resilient and infrastructure going forward, and that would be water and sewer projects.
I had a question. I know this question is going to come up, if it has not already, is rental assistance programs? And whether the city is involved in those or if it's through Region 10, if the citizens have an option? Or are we even investigating any kind of rental assistance programs?
So the city's not involved in that right now, but there are other organizations that that are, including Housing Resources of Western Colorado, and and we're in touch with them. And Ross Valdez, a community engagement specialist, talks with a lot of partners about all of those efforts. And so we help share information and we help connect people to those resources. But thus far, the city hasn't ventured into providing rental assistance. And I would say, I mean, there's kind of a long list of organizations here in our community that connect their clients with other organizations to provide those services.
So if people have a question on kind of attaining that rental assistance, that even though we don't provide that service, we can act as a conduit for connecting them with those organizations that do provide that?
Yes.
So if the if the citizens kind of contact or go on, is there a place on our website that they can access that'll link them to that? Or is that something that they're going to have to contact someone specific?
They would contact Ross Valdez directly and he would ask them some questions and we'd try to connect them directly to the best organization for their needs. And that's rvaldez@cityofmontrose.org is his email address. If they call the front desk even, we'd connect them with Ross.
David Reed, do you have a question?
More comment. Bill, I think all of the all of the topics that you mentioned as far as the expenditure of the funds all are very important, all very relevant and excellent uses of the funds. I'm wondering if the next step might be for staff to propose a or put together a spreadsheet with the each topic that you named, a recommended dollar amount and then the, you know, the the things within that each bracket that that those dollars would be used with, for instance, with respect to the mobile home parks, a a specific dollar amount and then ABC in terms of how those dollars would be utilized in the mobile home parks. Do that as a spreadsheet for each of the categories that you you've named. And then perhaps council could then look at that, shift things around, adopt it as is, drop some off, add more to it, but at least give us the beginning of a working document. Is that something that you could do?
Do you feel like you've gotten enough direction from council to be able to achieve something like that?
I think that's exactly what we were hoping to get out of this discussion today. Those were the priorities that had kind of risen to the top based on past conversations with council, citizens, nonprofits. But we didn't know if there were any other things you wanted to add today that we should research. And then we'd bring back some options for you with details and spreadsheets. So is there anything else other than those topics you want us to research?
I think the topics.
I'm personally fine with what you named.
I think the topics are pretty good. One of the questions I would have maybe for David Breeze is an update on what we're looking at for a construction timeframe on the proposed water plant down by the Ridgway Dam.
Based on the this the Project Seven's last meeting, I think the reality construction could start in the next three to five years. Maybe earlier on that at the end, but I think they're getting into the design phase. At this point, permitting is going to take a couple of years. But probably in that ballpark of three years, I would expect construction to start, maybe completed in the five-year window if everything keeps moving. Again, I think all of the supply chain issues is another one that's, I think, going to probably be looked at here in the short term to going, when is the right time to start pulling the trigger on some of this stuff?
Thank you. So kind of what we're hearing, what I'm hearing anyway, is that we're proposing to utilize some of this money to pay for current projects and some of our existing projects and some of the projected projects. And then utilizing the money that we had budgeted for those, putting it back into the water fund so that we can actually backfill our water fund so that we can help offset that cost later. Is that correct?
Yeah, with the amount that they're wanting us to pass through to our customers, we're going to see water rate increases. There's no doubt about that. And so this would would hopefully mitigate or reduce the amount that we would have to increase for our customers over time. Although it's in the big picture, we're not talking about a huge amount of money either way. Couple hundred, couple hundred, $300,000 or something like that. But but every dollar counts and would go toward that.
So just out of curiosity, I mean, we're talking about the increases due to supply chain issues with materials. That's obviously impacted by COVID. I mean, so could we potentially use those funds to help with finishing out the PD building?
Just from when we well, we read through it twice now at least. And I didn't see anything in there that I would see that would make that an eligible expense. But we'll definitely take a look at it again.
Definitely something we can look at. I had one question for Shaney, our finance director, because I know this comes up periodically. So Water and Sewer Fund, are we limited on the amount of grants that we can receive because of the type of fund it is? Can you possibly speak to that? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I figured I would ask that question.
Well, she's walking up to the mic. I just want to say I don't think we should use this money on capital construction for the police. I think we have greater needs that don't have funding sources in our community, whereas we have a funding source for that.
Yeah, due to Tabor in Colorado, enterprise funds are restricted to no more than 10% coming from other sources like the general fund or grants. 10% of their revenue.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments, staff?
No, I think we have what we need, and we'll start putting some numbers together and bring that forward. Probably the next discussion would be at another work session, not for actual approval of any sort. And then at that time, we can talk about, as we move project by project forward, would you want us to come before council each time, or a blanket authorization like we did with CARES Act, and then we divvy it out as we go without coming back every time, just for expediency? We can talk about that at the next work session.
Well, I would like to address that now. I think that it's more efficient for us to have one packet that we vote on as a, sort of a consent agenda item, rather than being nickled and dimed by every single project. And it slows down your process as well, having to bring every single project to us. I think it's a waste of our time.
I think if you, if, if you're listening to council, and your comments today reflect that you are, that if that money is being spent with our direction, I, I would agree that we don't need to get in and, and decide every last dollar.
I agree with that also. David, do you have any other, other questions? David Reed?
I, I agree with the consensus.
All right, thank you. If there are more, no more discussion on that, we will go to General City Council discussion. Anthony, anything?
I have a question, I'm not sure if it's for Scott Murphy, or Jim Scheid, or, or David Breeze, but there's been a lot of rain recently. Has it impacted any of our city infrastructure, and, and how are we responding?
Storm drain related, not significantly. I mean, we are out monitoring and, and cleaning as needed, but there has been no major damage to speak of in our storm drain system within town. It's been a relatively slow rain. You know, a lot of the monsoonal rain we get this time of year does dump a lot of rain in a small area, which can be problematic for our storm drain system, but this one's been, at least in what's hit in the downtown area, has been a little bit slower rain, and our system's been keeping up with it. So, small, small clogs, but nothing significant. Oh, yeah, yeah, it, when we get rain, like this time of year, definitely lets us know where our problem areas are at. We often don't find them if we have a dry year, but when we get some rain, we keep a close eye on it, because the problems will come up quickly, so.
I thought that was a good silver lining.
Yeah, helps us fix, fix our system, yeah.
Scott, any of our capital construction projects impacted by, by mud, too much rain? Are we seeing any delays?
So, in the construction world, we used to cuss rain, but we can't anymore, so, nothing, nothing of consequence, nothing significant, so.
Thank you.
Ann, you and I chatted the other day about that employee program that used to be in place for recognition?
Sure, this is something I'd mentioned to Bill, I think you're talking about how sometimes internally, we recognize employees for jobs well done. Yeah, do you wanna talk about that at all?
Sure.
Okay. Just since it's something council would talk to you about if they wanted to recognize employees.
And this, and this came out of our, some of the emails we're receiving, where we have employees that have gone above and beyond to really assist folks in, in the public, or have just done a great job, and wanting the ability to just maybe recognize them a little bit.
Yeah, we have a variety of avenues available to us for employee recognition. A lot of those during COVID were put on hold just to make sure that we conserved our resources as much as possible, although comparing ourselves to a lot of other cities in Colorado, we were more aggressive and kept going with our projects, and with wage increases, and we didn't do hiring freezes or any of those types of things. But some of the things we did put on hold were programs like our spot bonuses. And so internally, if we have a particular project that was difficult, and a team stepped up to the plate and went above and beyond their normal job duty expectations, they're eligible for spot bonuses, and that's at the discretion of the department head, who makes a recommendation to me, and then we approve those. And they usually range anywhere from $50 per person to $250, depending on how big the project was, what the impact was to the community or the organization. And so that has been reinstituted this year, and will definitely be in the budget for next year as well. So, that's just one monetary way we do that. We also have performance-based bonuses here at the city, and so, we try to hit our employees' pocketbook three times a year potentially. We, every two years, look at our market for base salaries, and compare ourselves to fifteen to twenty other cities and counties, and/or special districts, depending on what employee we're talking about. And if, and we try to match that market the closest we can, every year, and then every two years, update the market. And that's done in January, when we do the base salary increases. And then in July and August, we do performance evaluations that are individually based. Every employee's job has their own job description and evaluation attached to it, and they get anything from a $350 performance-based bonus for, you know, say a 3.0, up to, it could be a $1,600 approximately, on the high end, if they're 396 to 4.0. So, we do spot bonuses that are project-based, we do performance-based bonuses in conjunction with their pay systems, that doesn't affect their base salary, it's only a bonus. And then also, we do holiday bonus, come November, right before Thanksgiving, we try to do a small amount to help them with Christmas presents, and make sure the holidays are good for their families, so. That's all in, in addition to a lot of, anytime we hear from citizens that somebody did a great job, we forward that to City Council, and try to make sure that our council is aware of what our employees are doing. And we just have a wonderful team of employees here at the city, especially people that are out and about during COVID or post-COVID, trying to get out into the community and, and helping people catch up after the pandemic. And so, I would say, on a council level, because you're not involved in day-to-day management of employees based on charter, with our council manager form of government, it really isn't your decision to give somebody a bonus or a spot bonus, but definitely come talk to us, and we'll make that happen. It's just, it wouldn't be you directly to that employee, you would come through, Ann and I, make that recommendation, and then we would process the proper paperwork.
One thing I would say that is within our purview, is that as Mayor Pro Tim, I would like to publicly thank all of our department heads who don't get enough recognition. I think that every person I see sitting in this room has earned a huge gold star, which is about all we can give you. But I think that just the recognition of the hard work, and the amount of nonsense you have to put up with sometimes, just, I want you all to recognize that we see that, we recognize that, and we salute you. Great job.
That brings up a really good point, and we really appreciate the relationship between our elected officials and our staff, and we talk about that, and all of you attend our citywide staff meetings, when we have those, and we try to do that quarterly. And we don't wanna take that relationship for granted. And one big way the elected officials, in our case, City Council, can support our employees, is out in the community, being ambassadors to the city organization, because a lot of times, you'll read things that just aren't true about our employees or the work that they're doing. And I can tell you, we have a really hardworking, really intelligent group of city employees at every level in the organization, and you being our ambassadors out to your constituents when you're at coffee meetings, hanging around at your house, talking to people, you're at galas, or other large social events, and you've done that, and we really appreciate it. If you hear things that just aren't true about our staff, you correct people, and we, and then you point them in the right direction. If they need more details and you don't have that information, you reach out to us, and we make sure that the constituent gets it right away. So thank you for that.
There's one thing that I'd like to bring up. The, the council has a new employee that we have not had an opportunity to introduce at this time. So, Judge Greenacre, if you would come forward, please. I'd just like to thank you and, and point out that when we introduced several of the new employees recently, you weren't available to, to meet with that. Hello, and thank you, and I've been to a couple of his courts, and I've not seen a fight break out yet.
Yeah, we try to keep things on an even keel. I suppose I'll be addressing you in a few moments.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. David Reed, do you have any additional items?
I have, I have nothing except to say, welcome to Judge Greenacre, old-time friend.
Any additional staff comments?
Mr. Mayor, both Judge Greenacre and Mr. Magliaro are here, you had asked for a presentation from them on the video conferencing and some of the other things going on, so I just wanna make sure you're aware that-
Yes.
They're here for that.
Why don't we have the two of you, come on up and-
Let me ask for one, one concession. Could we just take like a five-minute break, so the people that are not really here for that can have an opportunity to leave?
Because we're paying them a lot of money, as it turns out, and they don't need to be in this-
Not enough, but, yeah.
Would you guys get back to work?
Thanks for coming, by the way, and answering all of our questions, really appreciate- the building's gonna be fantastic.
I don't know what I said.
The warning, all right. Did you get your flat panels? No, because I wanted to.
First appearances in generally for the people in custody on state charges or other matters. COVID changed that. They prevented the courts from going and doing that. So we have done a, or gone to an in custody virtual model. Dockets have been held Wednesdays at 3:00. We've held four of them, starting from June 23rd. We held one on June 30th, one July 14th, and one last week, July 28th. We've taken up 17 persons, numerous matters. Some were just one case, others had multiple cases. They've been a combination of probation or vacations, as well as new matters. Three were repeat persons that we've had. We also took up two matters, kind of off docket, before the docket, one of which was a virtual appearance by an attorney from Denver, so he saved his client that cost. The technical setup, I'd just like to talk about that a little bit. It's at the end of this table. We use the meeting owl. We use that for audio. We set that up at the table. The clerk of court is the kind of administrator for that. We silence our computers and then we have, we use our computers for audio. The jail dials in. The platform we use is WebEx, which is the platform that the state court system uses and the jail uses. It's worked well, the combination of the video and the audio. We've not had any issues to date with that. We did do a trial run in mid-June between the court and my office to make sure we had the technical matters set up, and it's worked very well. The dockets are physically posted to the court's website, excuse me, and they're physically on the door. So they're posted electronically to the court's website, and then physically a printed copy is fixed to the door outside for public notice of these dockets. I would like to compliment Judge Greenacre and his staff, Emily Boyko and Jody Stewart. They've done a remarkable and wonderful job about adapting this existing technology in use by the Montrose combined courts to address this issue of kind of a growing backlog with the jail population where we weren't able to see these folks and get them advised or deal with their cases. Again, COVID is probably not the only pandemic that we will live through, and other matters prevent sometimes visiting jail like a MERS infection. So a rule change may be necessary to, in future, regarding procedures to address this and to kind of put more procedural definitiveness on this, but that's the procedures we've done for Wednesday, 3:00, in custody advisement docket. They are open to the public and open to council courts, so if folks would like to come and see that process up close and see how it plays out, we're the welcome to join us. I'll turn it over to Judge Greenacre.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good morning again. I don't feel like a new employee. I feel like I've been here for a while and have been tried by fire, as it were. But it has been exciting. We are making some changes and taking a look at how we can better serve the people of the city of Montrose. My role here this morning is to talk to you about House Bill 21-1314 and the impact that it's going to have fiscally on the municipal court. And you should have received a handout, which is my very preliminary estimate of how it may affect our receipts, and that's based upon the 2020 numbers that are attached on the second page, which is our year-on-year revenue comparison. And I've heard numbers here of $3 million and $200,000, and I've heard talk about $10,000, but I think it's about 10% perhaps of our collections, so it's going to have a rather significant impact in that respect. Let me try to explain how, what we call it OJW in the industry, outstanding judgment and warrants, how that works. If a person has a traffic case, and it does apply to some other areas, but primarily what we're concerned about is traffic cases. If a person has a traffic case and they either do not appear, if it's a traffic infraction, for example, or if they do not pay their fine, we then notify the Department of Revenue. We do two things. One, we notify the Department of Revenue of that fact. But we also charge what's called an OJW fee, a $30 fee. And if you look on page two, at the bottom, you'll see the city of Montrose OJW fee and the state of Colorado OJW fee. Now, we don't note that when it's charged. We just note that in the court records that the OJW fee's been charged and the fines been charged, and court costs usually are charged. We then notify the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue then takes an action against the driver's license, a suspension of some type. And the person then, if they want to get their driver's license back, has to come to the court, whether it's the municipal court or the state court, and pay that fine, the court cost, and the OJW fee. And I can tell you that I was just sitting in my office the other day and somebody came that had their driver's license suspended three years ago, and they wanted to take care of it, so they paid us what we had charged them. Now, it's at that point, when we get that $30 OJW fee, when that's collected, not when it's charged, but when it's collected, we send $15, or half of that, to the state. And Shani, if she's still here, takes the other half, and that goes back into the city budget, or the city coffers, as it were. And as you can see, and I'm just using the 2020 numbers, they're lower than the 2019 and 2018, we're using that for comparison. We collected $960 in 2020 of OJW fees. Now, in addition to that fee, we probably, we collected court cost and the fine involved. In the last session, the legislature passed 21-1314, which does away with the OJW fee and the process of revoking a driver's, or suspending a driver's license for non-payment of fees. Now, the bill's larger than that, and there's some things that do survive, but relevant to our purposes, that enforcement mechanism effective January 1 of 2022 will no longer be in effect. How does that affect us? Well, I've put together a very rough analysis of the estimated lost revenue, and I'll explain why it's a very rough analysis and probably an understatement. And using the 2020 receipts, as you can see, in prior years, these numbers are a little bit higher. In 2020, we collected $960 in OJW fees. Fees had been assessed, but were paid in 2020. They could have been assessed in prior years, but they were paid in 2020. So we're gonna lose that. Now, we are making, and if you divide that 960 by $15, you arrive at 64 cases. So we're estimating $100 fine on average, and that's just an estimate because that seems to be a common fine. That's $6,400 in lost revenue that we would lose by not having the OJW. In addition, in doing some further analysis of this, I think we're gonna lose $25 a person, so you have to multiply 64 times 25, and it's another almost $1,600 that we would lose. So we're getting close to $9,000 just on those estimates. What we expect that's going to happen, as you can take a look and you can see fines collected, there's traffic, $64,000. Well, word gets out on the street, if you don't pay your fine, you don't lose your driver's license, so we'll probably see a reduction in fines. Also, you'll see on here, there's juvenile fines. It doesn't show as a specific category, perhaps, but if we have a juvenile that hasn't complied with their sentence by paying the fine or use of public service fee, or whatever it might be, we notify the Department of Revenue, and they will, that will prohibit that person from getting a driver's license until that's taken care of. That has partially been removed. We still have the ability to notify the department if they fail to comply with a sentence in certain respects, but we expect some reduction in those collections as well. So I would expect that we're looking at a reduction in collections of perhaps in the neighborhood of $10,000 or a little bit more. Now, why is that significant? If you look at the bottom, our total court collections in 2020 were $126,754. So we're gonna be approaching about 10% of the court collections that most likely will not be able to recover. Now, the legislature, interestingly enough, they replaced revenue for the Department of Revenue in the court system, the state court system, but not for municipal courts. But what they did do is to authorize a commission to study, amongst other things, the collection of revenue for municipal courts, but also avenues to encourage people to appear. And one thing I can tell you in my four months or so of being involved with the court is lots of people don't come. And we issue warrants, but we're having problems getting the warrants served, and even though we get them served and they post a bond, and they just don't come again. So any, anything that the legislature can come up with that will help in the appearance of defendants will be helpful. Now, the commission will be convened by the head of the state patrol, but there will be representatives of the municipal court judges association and, I believe, the state municipal league on that commission to make those recommendations. The OJW fee will be rescinded effective January 1, 2020, 2022, excuse me. The commission is to report before then, and I think that they're trying to have something before the legislature in the next session, but we'll just have to see how that goes. But I thought that was important for you to know that, that we will have an impact on revenue going forward. As I said, approximately about 10% on our revenue side. Are there any questions?
So, just as, this is my understanding of things, that our court system, our municipal court, is not meant to be a revenue generator so much as it is a cost recouping. We're trying to offset some of our expenses, because if you look on the total court expenditures, it's more than double what our intake is.
That's correct.
So we're not trying to make this as a revenue generation so much, but that term is used, but not really applicable.
Yeah, you know, and the state statute defines, and I learned this in law school some 50 years ago, that there are four criteria for the criminal justice system: punishment, retribution, rehabilitation, and confinement. Revenue is not one of those. The reason we impose fines is not to raise money, but to try to, well, deterrence. We're trying to tell the person that was speeding, this is for speeding, don't do it again. But we're also trying to tell the other people out there that aren't before the court, don't speed, because you'll know, you know, this guy got fined, you'll get fined if you speed too, so it's a deterrent effect. But raising revenue is not one of those functions.
The concern isn't the loss of revenue, because it's not like our municipal court is not an enterprise fund where you only have a budget based on revenue, but it's those other concerns that we lose inability to enforce, to, it's the other concerns. It's not the actual dollar.
Right, it's not the actual dollar. It's the concern, I mean, it's going to be less of a deterrent and less of a punishment if people know they don't have to pay it and there's no consequence.
Right, so I can start speeding on January 1st?
January 1st, yes. Don't do it now, though, because the school resource officer is out there.
All of our law enforcement officers are looking at you with a really different look now.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Oh, Mr. Reed, yes.
Yes, David?
Judge, now, the revenue side aside, this legislation did not affect the point system as a deterrent, though, did it?
No, it doesn't affect the point system. And the way that works is if, you'll notice if you get a, nobody here's ever got one, but if you ever happen to get a citation, there's some points attached to it. And depending upon your age, the nature of your driver's license, if you accumulate a certain number of points, then your license can be suspended. This will not affect that. That stays in place. So we will, if somebody's convicted, we will report that to the Department of Revenue, and they will note those points on the driver record and take action accordingly. It also won't affect the financial responsibility. If you are involved in a traffic accident and you don't have insurance, then your license could be suspended until you pay the damages. It won't affect any of that. It just affects the suspension of a license based upon not paying fines.
So, I've got a really bad question, maybe. So, is, you know, understanding obviously it impacts our insurance, it impacts everything else out there, so there is going to be some penalty still there.
Right.
I mean, with there being no teeth on collection, I mean, is there fear that we start to give tickets and then it just gets out of control because there is no, that they don't have to technically pay that fee versus saying, okay, we're gonna suspend fees temporarily in order to not show that, I don't know, that there's some kind of way that you're getting around the system or that discipline is not there any longer?
Well, I don't know that I can really compliment, or comment on that aspect. I think clearly if there's a sense that there's no penalty, it will reduce deterrence. But I think what you're seeing nationally, and other states are doing this too, is relying less on monetary sanctions for violations because of the unequal impact that that has, you know? A person's earning $100,000 a year, a $100 fine is not as impactful, less of a deterrent than if they're earning $10,000 a year. So we're kind of moving away from that. Now, how can you replace that? Well, that's a good question. Perhaps traffic schools or some such thing, use of public service, I don't know. But at least where we are now in this, shall I say, the experiment of the criminal justice system, is to move away from, and specifically to move away from collateral sanctions, because if you get a traffic ticket and it's four points, say, that's not gonna suspend your license if you're an adult. But if you get a traffic ticket that's four points and don't pay the fine, then you get your license suspended. So what they're saying is, just because we're not going to have a collateral consequence based upon the non-payment of money. So that's essentially the rationale behind the legislation. Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm hoping that I can invite all of you at one time or another to come and sit up with me at the bench and view our process. And by the way, our court clerk, Emily, is here today, and she's really the one that knows all about these numbers and is really the moving force of the municipal court. Thank you very much, hope to see you all soon.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, staff? Scott?
I have an unrelated comment to give you a heads up about. So if your news feed is anything like mine, it's 99% comprised of engineering stuff and water. And so the algorithm's working for me, obviously. But if you've been watching the news, even some of the national headlines of, you know, the water situation in the West, I did want to take some time at an upcoming work session. There's been a lot of questions from the public about, more about local water and our water resources outlook, which we're sitting pretty well, but there is a crisis looming on the larger Colorado system that, you know, 40 million people depend on. So I wanted to just give you some kind of insider information on that and help understand where we're going and how we manage that going forward. And then, it sounded like Mark Catlin might even possibly want to join, which would be a great opportunity. Then I also wanted, on that same topic, wanted to give you a heads up that if you go to the Colorado River District's website, they have a pretty good, they call it Lunch, or Water With Your Lunch. It's kind of a routine webinar series they do. This week, they will be talking about the larger Colorado system. That's under their director, Andy Mueller. Really good resource on these things if you're into geeking out about water. I'd recommend signing up for that. It's free. Should be a good enlightening webinar. I think that's on Thurs, maybe. So, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
And on that topic, I'll add that the program for the forum on Wednesday, August 18th, is going to also be on water, and that'll be my friend Jason Ullman, who has actually been promoted to, I think it's deputy state engineer, so from the Montrose office, he now works in the state office, and he'll be presenting at forum about these kind of topics too.
And that's the 18th?
The 18th, Wednesday, the 18th.
Great.
So mark your calendars, because I know you don't know about that ahead of time, so I'm telling you now.
I will be there. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Thanks.
I would make one, one comment. We were talking about the increase in water, building a new water treatment plant down by Ridgeway, and for those that aren't aware of it, we only have one source of water supplying the valley around here, and that's the Gunnison River. If for some reason we had a collapse of the tunnel or we had a River. If for some reason we had a collapse of the tunnel or we had a serious fire in our watershed, we could be without water at some point. So there's a real need to do that. I think Suro Sommet Reservoir gives us about a three-week coverage on, on water, but that would, would really put a strain on us. Any other comments? All right, let's close the work session for today. Thank you.